Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February the 18th. The order, roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Holst.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Mattson is absent. Shobloom.
Here.
McCusker.
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting tonight. Spring's teasing us, I think. But we'll get to spring yet. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. This time, we'll move on to Item 5 this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to items not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under public input this evening? Come on up, please.
My name is Martin Both. I live at 315 West State Street, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. My concern is, it's kind of been my concern for a few weeks, because in the alley where, you know, where the new fire hall is, they've been plowing the snow and they keep plowing it over on top of the storm sewer. Well, tonight, the water is over ankle-deep. I was out there trying to chop away to get at that storm sewer to see if I could get it opened up, because we have another day like today, tomorrow, my garage is going to be full of water again. I've never had water in my garage. I've lived here since 1987, never had water in my garage until they built that monster. And then they came in and fixed the alley, and I've still had water in the garage. And Joe, my neighbor, can testify too, that keeps washing the driveway out. But I know it's going to be a mess tomorrow morning, tomorrow if we have another day like today. Because you can just go and drive through that alley, it's deep. And I know we got problems tomorrow, and my garage will be full of water. So I don't know.
We can address that first thing in the morning.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I went out there tonight to see if I could, but it was either me diving the water or figuring out whether my... Anyway, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Martin. Yeah, Tom and Public Works crew jump on it first thing in the morning.
I gotta finish my name here.
If anybody at home has any other issues on the things plugged, just let us know so that we can get Publics work on it, so, anybody at home that's listening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public input?
Name is Burl Johnson. I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but I guess what I'm here about tonight is, I was wondering what the City of Cannon Falls is going to do about all these frozen water pipes. You got a lot of people that are fix incomes, and I'm one of them, and for them to come and hook up to the water pipe, $500. That goes pretty much my whole, our social security check. And then I gotta pay rent on top of it. Then, once I get the pipes sorted out, from my understanding, you gotta let the water run until it stays above 36. Who's gonna take care of that water bill? It sure as heck ain't gonna be me. I mean, there's gotta be a compromise someplace in there. I know there's a lot of them in town that's having the problem. And I guess, you know, I guess City Council and Publics workers gotta sit down and figure out something about this. I mean, you got, this town is a senior citizen town, pretty much. A lot of them are fix incomes, and I guess, hey, oh, I'd be appreciative of a little bit of help, you know? Mine is frozen from the street to the house, and nothing coming in. So, and then you got the tax, or the money for the sewer also. So, I just a little upset about this, and there's a few other people I know are too. I guess I'm the only one that came down and talked about it, so I'd like to bring that to you guys' attention. Thank you.
I mean, it's not on the agenda tonight, it's something that will be discussed over the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to discuss it. Public Works Commission will talk about it, and then bring it to the full council probably next month, or, so that it can be looked at and see what, if anything, that we can do. I mean, we've got certain things we can do by law, and certain things we can't do by laws, but we will take a look at it and discuss it and see what we can do.
I guess my other question is, from the street to the house, is that considered the homeowner's responsibility to the meter?
Yes, Burl, you own from your house to the main, on water and sewer. And that's, I would say about 50 percent of the cities do it that way. Some will own to the property line, or to the corp, or the curb stop, but Cannon Falls, it's from the main to your meter, it's owned by you.
Okay. But then on your gas, that's the opposite way. When it comes to your meter, anything past your meter is your problem.
But that's not a city function, that's a gas company function.
Right, right, right. I understand that, but what I'm just saying compared to, same with electricity. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Burl. Anyone else wishing to address under public input? Seeing as there are none, we'll move on to Item 6, which is proclamation. This will be Resolution 2059, Recognizing the Cannon Falls School Board. And I will, for those at home, I will read the resolution. And the resolution states, "City of Cannon Falls, Goodyear County, Minnesota, Resolution Number 2059. Resolution recognizing the Cannon Falls School Board, whereas the City of Cannon Falls recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas the City of Cannon Falls appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government, and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Cannon Falls recognizes and salutes the members of the Cannon Falls School Board by proclaiming February the 17th through the 21st, 2014, a School Board Recognition Week, adopted by the City Council and the City Council of Cannon Falls this 18th day of February 2014." And do we need to vote on that, or is that just?
That's resolution.
Okay. So at this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve resolution for the school board.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Merle, a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And for the school board, you know, just say thank you for all you do. Running the school system, it's not an easy task. It's a small city in itself, so thanks a lot for all you do. This time, we'll move on to Item 7, Public Hearings. Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance 334, Adopting the City of Cannon Falls Fee Schedule. Lenell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is on the agenda tonight because our city attorney had advised us that some of the fees that we adopted by resolution in January are actually required to be adopted by ordinance. And they recommended, rather than just picking out those few that fell into that category, it'd be easier just to keep it all as one document, and approving it all in this format. So that's why it's back before you again tonight. So we didn't change anything from the one that you saw in January, except for one item. We did add a $500 fee for a dangerous dog permit, which we did not have on the previous schedule. So that is the only change from what you saw at that time until now. So we are required to introduce this tonight and hold a public hearing on this subject.
What's a dangerous dog?
That would be if a dog bit someone, then they would have to register that animal as a dangerous dog.
So you didn't go by breed?
No.
All right. This time, we will open up the public hearing for the First Reading of Ordinants for 2014 License Fees. Is there anyone wishing to address the council during the public hearing? Seeing as there is no one, we will move on and close the public hearing at this time, and the Chair will take a motion to approve ordinance, introduce the ordinance 334.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
You know, I talked to Lenell about that today, Robbie, and I think that's something we should look into again before next year, on some of the fees and some of the things on that. Not that there's a problem with it, but Lenell and I talked about some of my concerns on that, so something that should be talked about, I think, for next year again.
Yeah, I mean, we always try to address it every year, I mean, if possible, and if there's anything that needs to be changed, I mean, we can always change it. I mean, when sent out to us ahead of time, we should be able to go through it and recommend any changes to it, so just keep that in mind for yourself. Okay, this time, I will move on to Item 8, which is the Consent Agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is the Just and Correct Claims for Accounting Period Ending February 14, 2014. Item B are the meeting minutes for the February 6, 2014, Special City Council Meeting. Item C are the meeting minutes for February 6, 2014, City Council Meeting. Item D is Application for Payment Number 8 on the East Side Project. And Item E is the Assistant Street Supervisor. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Mayor, may I just make a comment? Sorry, may I make a comment regarding Item 8E, the Assistant Public Works Position, Street Supervisor? The memo was passed out tonight for your review. We weren't able to get it into the pack, so you do have it in front of you, and I did just want you to note that that position would be a pay grade 10, Step 3, just so that you're aware of that, and we can get it recorded in a minute, so officially.
And the only question I have, is the union on board with this? Never did get an answer the last three times I asked this question.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any items anybody wishing to bring down? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I wanted to bring D down, Robbie.
D, okay. Item D will become Item 9B.
Step 3.
Any other items? If not, then the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus application for payment number 8 of the East Side Project.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda's approved. Move us on to council business, and Item A, which is to set date to canvass special
As you're aware, we are having a public referendum that's going to be held on Monday, March 3rd. State statute requires that the city meet to canvass and declare the results of those elections within three to 10 days from the date of the election. Therefore, we have a few options. The third day, which is the first day that the council could meet to approve those results and declare those, would be March 6th. So we have a current, or we have a regularly scheduled meeting for March 4th. We could meet again on March 6th, or we could perhaps move the March 4th meeting and just have one meeting on the 6th, and it's up to the city council on what you want to do with that. So we could have the regular meeting on Tuesday night, and then meet again on Thursday to declare the election results, or, as I said, combine the meetings into one on Thursday. So I put that under council discussion, or council business, so that you can direct me in what you would like to do.
Well, I think just having one meeting on the 6th would make more sense.
That would work for me, because I'm gonna be out of town on the 4th. I'll be in it.
Anyone else?
Anybody else? Yep. All right, so we will change the meeting to the 6th of March.
Thursday.
Can I please just get a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to change the meeting to March 6th.
A motion by Bill, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, that moves us on to Item 9B, which is Application for Payment Number 8 of the East Side Project.
Yeah, the question I had on that was, I talked to Greg about it, is on the 12 homes up there that we added on at the end, as far as I know, nobody's tapped in up there. So I was just kind of concerned if we bled off any hydrant through stuff, to see if anything has froze, or that everything is good to go up there. I guess I'm concerned about that big-sized piping that was handled, put in there to handle the new development of six, seven houses there, and then there's three on the other side, and none of them are hooked in. So I guess I was kind of curious where we are in that situation. If it does freeze up, is it because houses aren't hooked up, and it ain't running water through it? Or have we at least cracked the hydrant to see if there's water flow up there, or what's happening before the final payment? And what happens if it is all froze up? Then where's the liability in this thing?
Well, this pay-up isn't the final payment, so we'll have a chance in the spring to go through all the punch of this stuff, and come up with any issues like that. As far as liability, that'd be a good question, given the weather we've had this winter. If there is an issue, I don't know, I'm not aware of an issue at this point, but I understand where you're coming from, not having any flow through that pipe. Is that a good thing or a bad thing at this point? We guess we don't know. And I don't know if Tom knows for sure if they've tried any hydrants since we got done testing it all last fall or not. I know there's a period of time where we had it shut off on the north side, just because no one had hooked up yet on the south side. All I can comment, Leroy, is, other than the October flushing, we haven't did anything. We don't really like to open a hydrant this time of year, because, God forbid, you don't get it shut again, you know, and where's the water going, and things like that. So we haven't did anything, and then, like Greg said, with the warranty work, we just, we've had our hands full.
Yeah, I know. But this isn't closing the project, Ellen. But there's a minimum amount that's left after this payment, right? It didn't amount to that many thousands of dollars. And I want these people to be paid, I don't want to hold up the money, but I'm just curious as how this is all going to work.
There is some retainage left, granted, it's only $5,100. Your retainage generally has to be based on the amount of outstanding work to do, and right now, there isn't any work to do, other than any cleanup or adjustments and stuff we find come spring. We did have a concern with the service on the west side project, and hatches came in, televised, and did some work, and, you know, did the best they could to stand behind it. Turns out, it wasn't their issue at that point, so I would assume that it, maybe if we have an issue on this one, we've worked with them on several projects, I can't imagine that we would hear from them or be able to work with them if there is an issue come spring.
Okay, thank you.
Lenell, can you check on that liability issue for that, with the county attorney, just to see? I mean, that way, we've got answers if we have anything else come of what. Any further discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve payment number 8 for the East Side Project.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And that moves us on to Item 10, Reports. Mr. Maroni.
Funny to mention that the EDA will meet on Wednesday, March 5th, rather than Wednesday, March 12th, because I never quite understood that. That's all I know.
Greg?
I don't have.
Tom?
Oh, where do I start? Now I know what a rented mule feels like. Last week and a half have been tough. Every phone caller's angry and salina. I don't blame them. Just to put some perspective on what's happened, I've had four frozen water services in 25 years, and those were all in 2009. I've had 24 this year to date. So it is frustrating. It's frustrating for staff to, we don't have the answers, because this is like the 200-year flood. We don't have answers, and we don't have people that are raring to go to fix things like this, so they all come out of the woodwork. What we've learned from this is, before next year, we'll develop a protocol, so those people will have to be bonded and insured, so we don't have Joe the welder coming in off the farm, so we kind of protect the liability. There's can be a lot of damage can be done with these welders, they can burn houses down, they can fry out computers if you're not doing it right. So we want to make sure the steps are in place, even though it might be another 20 years before we see this again, but we want to make sure the steps are in place. Yesterday, for instance, we were out, guys were out plowing all last night, went home, went to bed, and a broken main at the hospital, so it's, there's so many areas to go to, and now, people are getting frustrated, the winter's getting long, their driveways are going to start filling up a lot quicker, because there's nowhere for the snow to go. It'll ride on our plow blade until it gets to their driveway, and away it goes. So we try to drive the trucks and look straight ahead, and not watch all the hand gestures that come our way, but just, guys are doing the best they can, you know? Sometimes, we do the best we can with what we have, and includes the frost and the freezing issues.
I want to say thanks to the job that you guys do, because I know our roads have been, you know, a lot of times, these snowstorms hit at inopportune times, which, and you guys do a good job of managing the personnel that are coming in, trying not to do as much overtime as possible. I mean, when it's snowing, there's no sense in coming and plowing until it's done, I mean, because it's just going to be double the work, so, I mean, and I know those guys put in a lot of hours, and it's tough sometimes, and, no, we're not going to please everybody, but do the best job you can, and just keep up the good work, because we really appreciate it.
The one concern, Tom, since you were talking about this, is that I have is, we are definitely at a critical point, because I've been taking temperatures of tap water, and it's coming out of a lot of taps at 34 degrees. The problem is, we got, I was telling Greg earlier, is that it's not necessarily the ground that froze up, the water is so cold that it's actually freezing from the inside of the mains out, it's not coming down and freezing the other way like it always did before. So this is unique. The one thing, I thought we should probably have a special meeting to discuss it more, because I foreseeing everything that's coming two weeks ago, when I started seeing 34-degree tap water two weeks ago. So I guess my big thing for the Public Works would be, is are we to the point where we should, on certain mains and certain ends, have people start running their water? And of course, this gets into a nightmare for staff, to give all these credits back and stuff, if everybody comes in and starts arguing, saying they run a water. But this is a unique situation, and we are only in February, and the frost is going to go down more. So I almost thought we should have a special meeting to decide if we should start running more water around town, or I'm really scared we're going to have more water main breaks. So I just wanted to throw that out there for you to think, if you think we should have a special meeting to discuss it more, Dr. Lenell, I guess, and I'd be open, or anybody else, whatever we wanted to discuss there, but I think we might be at a critical point. If we don't do something, it's going to get a lot worse.
Yeah, I agree, Leroy. I think probably the next month, we're going to be in a critical phase. What we tend to see, we've heard the stories of, just before it froze, their water got really rusty, or they got air bubbles in it. We've tried little, simple things, does it help? I don't know. We've tried filling the water, the water tower less full, so the water's going to the mains, a couple degrees difference, does it make a difference? I don't know, but anything we can do on our behalf, we're trying to do.
Right.
But yeah, I think what I'm trying to do now is collect what protocol is from other cities, so we kind of know, so we can kind of band together, so we know what's the right thing to do, and what's the proper thing to do, and how we can address it properly, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
I'll just kind of piggyback onto that conversation just a little bit. As of right now, we don't have anything in our city policy that allows us to give credits for running the water in a situation like this. Our city ordinance allows us to give sewer credits in the summer, and the concept of that, as you know, is because the water is typically going down into the lawns or other places, and not going through the city sewer system, so the city does not incur the cost of processing that water, because it's not going through the treatment plant. The situation is different, because the city is paying for treating the water and the sewer that goes through the both systems in running water, because it's coming from the water treatment facility, and then going through the water, or water processing, going to the water treatment facility. So this is a different situation, and it's something we need to be very cautious of. You know, what my recommendation would be, because we're not officially recommending that people run water, it's their choice, because we don't have this policy in place. So until we really see what's out there, and what those bills look like, we don't really know what we're talking about, as far as the amounts and quantities. We have some guesses and ideas, but each one, you know, if you look at the media, they say a pencil size. Well, each person might look at that a little bit differently, and some might have a thicker pencil, and some might have a smaller one. So we don't really know how much water is going through each person's home, until we get through a billing cycle or two. So I guess what I would recommend that we do is that if people do decide to run water, they're going to see a higher water bill. I would suggest that they pay what they would typically pay, an average amount, so that they can just keep up on that. I would also recommend that the city waive any penalties for the amounts that are not being paid, until we get this situation resolved. I would also suggest that we take a look at this, perhaps a little bit more in detail, once we get through this critical time right now, and we're really looking at numbers, and real numbers, and not estimates. How much is it really costing us to process that wastewater, and the water that's going through those systems? And we just don't have the answers right now. We don't know how big of a problem this is going to end up to be. You know, as I said, we're only into February, we could be dealing with this for some time yet, so we don't know how many more homes are going to become affected by this problem. So until we get some of those answers, it's really difficult, as a staff person, to recommend that we give credits or not, until we really know where those numbers are at.
And I would just say, Public Works, that's going to be our number-one priority at our next meeting, and some of the temporary items that Lenell just mentioned are things we will discuss for a temporary basis. We know we're looking a couple, two, three months before we can solve it in total, as we get all the facts and figures in, but we're going to be hitting right on it.
Right, and one other item, just so that you're all aware, it was brought up to see if we could assist residents with their, what their costs that they're incurring for thawing their pipes. I checked with our city attorney, and legally, we cannot do that, because it's on private property, and it's not a public-purpose expenditure. So the only recourse we would really have at this point is to perhaps help with the water bill, but even then, it's a caution, because until we really know where those numbers end up, you know, it's hard to estimate what those costs will really be.
Wow, you gotta help me with this, though, because I've been told up to now that we would give a credit for anything over the average bill, but that's not true.
I've never, no, I never said that, I don't know.
Okay, so... Okay, so, um, we have all different situations that we ran into. If you wanna know the amount, um, one of them that we thought we had it running at a gallon, a little less than a gallon a minute, and it froze up three days later again, so we had to crank that one up to two gallons a minute. I can't imagine what this person's bill is gonna be, um, and now I'm sitting here thinking, uh, for lack of better words, I told this person, the way I understood it, the city is probably crediting this back. Now whether where I got that information, I ain't getting that into that tonight, but I didn't make that up. So my biggest concern now is, if I should call this person up, or these people that I went to this week, call them all back and say, "This is where you're at," and what do I do if they say, "I, I can't afford that, I'm turning it off?" So there's, there's one that normally you can leave a flow of about a half to a gallon a minute and be just fine. I mean, our water has never froze up in our house, where we live, in all the years we've been there. But I did get the rush shot about two weeks ago, and then I started getting air in my lines, and then I tested the water. And yeah, the, the first, uh, four hours I ran the water, um, I had solid air in the lines, because I could tell the ice was dissolving as I cranked up the flow. So in this particular case, um, there's all these people out there, I, I don't know what to tell them or what to do. Tom has situations where he said people told him that they weren't gonna thaw it out, and they were just gonna leave it till spring. I told Tom, "How can we do that? Because if, if it back, uh, freezes to the main, now the main busts, and now we got the expense of feeding that." So I don't know how we can do that. I don't know how we can let these side feeds freeze, because there is flare fittings in there that any kind of a pressure, they're probably gonna leak after the freeze. So I, just listening to this tonight, I, at two gallons a minute, if, if you take that, you're talking a hundred and twenty gallons an hour times twenty-four hours, you're talking into thousands of gallons here. What are we gonna do? Just let these freeze up? I mean, uh, it gets back to, I told Tom this week, that we put these mains in, we put these pipes in, we had them engineered, we had them inspected, and some of these pipes, I thawed out twenty-five years ago. These people that do thaw pipes can tell you the names of all the places they've been going to for the last twenty-five years. So it isn't like an old problem, uh, or a new problem, it's, it's been there before. Now, the problem is, we're having this year, new ones are popping up. I got two of them over the weekend that I've never had froze before. So I, wow, I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, I guess it makes me wonder, am I gonna turn mine off and take a chance? And I just don't think that's the right thing to do, but, but, uh, we got a problem here, we gotta figure out how to deal with this. It's gonna be much cheaper to let people run at a half a gallon a minute. And, and the ones I've been thawing, Tom always says to me that if it's, if run the main to the, to house, it's their problem. I would say I've had one that I knew was, uh, the line to the house. The other ones I've done have all been the main. It's either feeding right where the corporation cog feeds the main, uh, the one, we even had to re-thaw it twice, so I knew it was in the main, because every time I'd get it open, a big solid chunk of ice in that main would slam in front of the hole, and it'd cut it all off again, we'd have to thaw it again. So I don't know what the answer is, and, and for a guy like me, actually, a couple of people that I like well and trust got into the business this week, and the first thing I said was, "It's all yours," because I don't wanna deal with this stuff anymore at my age, and, um, I, I really don't wanna deal with it now, if, if we're not gonna have some kind of compassion or understanding here, uh, to make the system work. The other thing I'll say is, is that our water temperature is so cold, that we're not necessarily freezing from the frost, we're freezing because of, the water is so cold. So it's a very unique situation, and like I told, uh, the guys that, if, if this is the situation we're gonna be into every five years this happened, we're probably gonna have to go to Starfam over the mains and stuff and change our whole way installing this stuff. And going down deeper, I mean, we're talking about a frost level of seven feet now. They had a special on this stuff on TV one night, said anything below forty degrees should be critical on your water temperature, and we're down, in my particular house, it goes through forty feet of inside piping before it gets to my kitchen sink, and that's where it was thirty-four degrees, so, uh, I get a lot of calls and a lot of angry people, like Tom does, um, and I just tell them, "I will thaw your pipes, I'll take care of it, but I don't have the answers. If you can't pay me, at least send me fifty, seventy-five bucks a month or something." But this, this is critical, and we're only into February, and frost always goes down before it comes out, so I, I almost think we need a special meeting. I, I think it's really serious.
And Public Works will discuss it, like we said, Tom will, and then we'll discuss it, and we'll kinda, and then we'll bring it up at the next council meeting.
Hey, if you're being done for the next council meeting, really?
We'll do it at the next council meeting. Like we said, we gotta have time to discuss it and look at it and, and get other people involved, so, uh, that's when we'll do it. It's about a week and a half away. Any others? Merle?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one other thing. I just wanted to inform the city council that the city was awarded the grant from the state of Minnesota, um, actually, the federal grant for the election assistance for individuals with disabilities. We applied for that grant back in December, and we just received notification that that was approved, so we will be purchasing, once we receive the signed contract, we'll be purchasing, um, some ADA compliant voting booths, um, which will accommodate wheelchair access, and then we also will have voting booths that will accommodate the, what we call the automark machine, uh, with some privacy shields, so I just wanna let you know that.
Good. Nothing. I have nothing.
Anything else you want?
Just one other little thing to add to that. When we as plumbers, uh, get our license, uh, the state of Minnesota says that we have to protect the health of the people, and that's what we're doing out there. And when you don't have water and, um, their toilets aren't working and stuff, we aren't doing a good job protecting people. So I think this is a big issue, and I just wanna say, Robbie, uh, good job on the state of the city.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nothing? I have nothing this evening at this time. Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
(end of transcript)